Yes.
Hi Gary, would you like to do a mic check?
Hi, yes.
I can hear you loud and clear, thank you.
Okay, I was just looking to find my audio to make sure, okay, so you can seen and heard, okay then.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Hello Commissioner McCann, would you like to do a mic check?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Hello Commissioner Speck, would you like to do a mic check?
Good evening.
Wonderful, thank you. And hello Commissioner McAvoy, would you like to do a mic check as well?
Sure thing, how's that?
Loud and clear, thank you. Just as a quick reminder for the applicant team, if you're able to mute your audio and turn off your cameras until it's time for the applicant presentation, that would be wonderful, thank you.
Greetings, now is the time in place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which Commissioner members are participating this evening. Commissioner Holmes.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner McAvoy.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner McCann.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Mettler.
Present.
Commissioner Speck.
Present.
And Commissioner Winter.
Present.
We are now at Commission Communications. Commission, any communications? We are now at Staff Communications, Staff, any communications?
This is Jana Fox, current planning manager, no communications from us this week, thank you.
Thanks Jana. And new business, the first item on the agenda is the application for LU 32025-00269, Southwest Bible Church Edition. Case file numbers CU 32025-00265, DR 22025-00264, and TP 22025-00266. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in the hearing are: Development Code Section 40.03.1, Facilities Review, 40.15.15.4(c), Major Modification of Conditional Use, 40.20.15.2(c), Design Review 2, and 40.90.15.2(c), Tree Plan 2. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria. Any other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing appeal to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. The state and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following question will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits to declare? Commissioner Holmes.
I do not.
Thank you, Commissioner McAvoy.
I do not.
Commissioner McCann.
No to all three.
Commissioner Mettler.
No to all three.
Commissioner Speck.
None to declare.
Commissioner Winter.
No to all three.
And I am no to all three as well. Does any member of the audience wish to question the commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate this evening? Let the record show no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will be given 20 minutes for its presentation followed by commissioners' questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak up to five minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application can speak up to five minutes each. Members of the public who are neither in support of nor oppose will then have five minutes to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. We will now begin with the staff presentation.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Lena Smith, I'm an associate planner in the Community Development Department, I'll go ahead and share my screen. Tonight I'll be presenting on the Southwest Bible Church Edition project. The applicant proposes to construct a new 12,630 square foot building that will be used by both the church and school uses on-site, but does not request to increase student enrollment with this application. The applicant also requests to remove six trees from an on-site significant natural resource area. The project is located on an approximately 24 acre property at the intersection of Weir Road and Murray Boulevard. The site is occupied by the Southwest Bible Church campus, which includes existing buildings, athletic fields and play areas, a surface parking lot, and the significant natural resource area which occupies most of the western portion of the site. The location of the new building is circled here in red. For the benefit of newer planning commissioners, this presentation will provide some additional information about why each land use application is needed to facilitate the proposed project. We'll start off by discussing conditional uses, which are uses that are not permitted outright, but instead they must be reviewed for compatibility with and impacts on the surrounding development. Depending on the use that's proposed and the zone that it's located in, the use can either be permitted outright, conditional, or prohibited. In this case, both educational institutions, the school, and places of worship, the church, are conditional uses in the subject RMB zone. The subject site has existing conditional use approval from the 1990s for both the church and the school. Accordingly, the applicant is not required to apply for a new conditional use, but instead a modification to the original conditional use because they are adding floor area. And in this case, the amount of new floor area proposed, which is over 12,000 square feet, fits them under a major modification of a conditional use. As detailed in the staff report, the application meets all applicable approval criteria for a major modification of a conditional use. This includes compliance with the Beaverton Comprehensive Plan, and the applicant has demonstrated the proposal is compatible with and will have minimal impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. This is because the new building will be set back over 300 feet away from all property lines, and there will be no increase in church occupancy or student enrollment with this application. The second required application is the Design Review 2. With this application, we're not evaluating the proposed use, but the actual building that's proposed and associated site improvements to ensure they comply with design standards in the Development Code. As detailed in the staff report, the proposal complies with all applicable design standards in Chapter 6005. Staff would like to highlight two conditions of approval that we recommend for the Design Review 2. The first is for the applicant to install 32 new bike parking spaces to meet minimum bike parking requirements in Chapter 6030. And the applicant also proposes to remove 16 landscape trees, which are on-site trees that are located outside of the significant natural resource area. And staff has included a condition for the applicant to plant mitigation trees to comply with the mitigation requirements in Chapter 6060. The last application is a Tree Plan 2, which is required because the applicant proposes to remove six trees from a significant natural resource area located in a residential zone. The applicant states the tree removals are necessary to accommodate the new building and required walkways and emergency access road. As detailed in the staff report, the proposal meets all applicable approval criteria, and because the applicant is only removing about 1% of the total inches measured by diameter at breast height in the significant natural resource area, no mitigation trees are required. Therefore, staff recommends approval for the Southwest Bible Church Edition project, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. I did see, I accidentally skipped over the slide with the conditions of approval, so I'll leave that up. But this does conclude the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of staff with regard to the proposed application? Commissioner Winter.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Yeah Chair Adams, I have some questions, if that's all right, jump in. I was wondering, on the enrollment question, does that mean that under the original condition of approval back in the 90s that there was, there's an enrollment that specified and we're comparing current enrollment to that? And the reason I ask is just that I realize the language in the narrative is a little bit vague. You know, it says that they're not planning to increase enrollment, but that it could increase up to, by up to 45 students, and that's included in the transit analysis and that kind of thing. So I was just wondering how that assessment is made.
I believe the original conditional use from 1990s did not specify a student body amount. So we were just asking the applicant to provide if there's going to be an increase in what the current enrollment is, but perhaps the applicant can expand on that during their presentation as well.
Sure, that'd be great. And then my other question was, on the conservation easement side of things in the SNRA, that ruler, that estimate of 1% DBH removal, is that from within the applicant's property ownership? Within the portion of the SNRA owned by the applicant or the SNRA writ large?
I believe the arborist based it on the SNRA that's on the property.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you Commissioner McAvoy, Commissioner Speck, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, Commissioner Mettler, any questions?
No questions for me.
Okay, Commissioner McCann, any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Holmes, any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
I have no questions either. The applicant will now have 20 minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourselves and stating your names and addresses for the record.
Good afternoon, good evening Commissioners, my name's Brad Kilby, I'm a senior land use planner with Harper Hoff Peterson Regalas, and we're representing the church in this process. You'll know that there are other folks on here as well. They'll introduce themselves if they speak, and they're here primarily to answer any technical questions and then operational questions from the church itself. My address is 205 Southeast Spokane Street, Portland, Oregon 97202. Let me share my screen here real quick. Are you seeing that? Is my screen visible?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, okay. Now, if I can get it to work, oh, so the vicinity. So Southwest Bible Church is located at the corner of Southwest Murray Boulevard and Southwest Weir, actually in the southwest corner of the site. It's an existing church, and this is probably outlining the largest SNRA whole point, and I'll get to Commissioner McAvoy's question here in a second. It's actually part of my presentation. So the church proposes to do a 12,630 square foot two-story building to be constructed on the site. It'll be utilized by both the church for educational purposes and includes six classrooms, a multipurpose room, restrooms, and open concept upper story to be used flexibly as needed by the church and the school. Fire access will be expanded to serve the new construction, additional bike parking will be provided on-site. This goes to Commissioner McAvoy's point, while not constructed to grow the enrollment, the addition would permit an additional 45 students to attend the school. So as you can imagine, schools and school enrollment is very volatile, so it's ups and downs. Some communities require you to outline the ultimate enrollment, and so when the traffic engineer looks at that, they also kind of want to know what the enrollment is because that helps them to predict trips and trip splits, things like that. And so they're not building this to accommodate additional enrollment, but if you were to go to the church now and walk around the church inside, there is a lot of crowded space, so they're trying to get their students some more room for some of their proposed teaching. It's located at 14600 Southwest Weir. The approvals that we're requesting are the major modification that Lena discussed, a design review 2 and tree plan 2. The church campus has three existing buildings totaling approximately 120,000 square feet in size, and it was master planned in 1986. The first phase was also constructed in that same year, and there were major campus improvements for seven phases in 1996. Additions were also added in 1999, 2008, 2010, 2017, 2018, and 2023. Their ministry has evolved. The property is owned residential mixed use, it's not uncommon to have a church or a school within a neighborhood, and they're typically conditional uses because you're trying to figure out how the impacts from that use can be mitigated on the neighborhoods. Both the places of worship and educational uses are permitted conditionally in the zone, and the proposed development in that location on those 24 acres is consistent with all dimensional requirements of the zone, we need the height, we need to set back the lot coverage floor area. And like I said, the campus sits on 24.8 acres and it's fairly forested. And I'll get to that here in a second. Here is the significant natural resource, and this is, obviously, this is not necessarily ground truth in this image, this is a GIS layer that's overlaid on the campus to kind of give you an idea. But generally, the significant natural resource area is intended to capture the Title III metro lands and any land that the city has designated in addition to that. And it's probably due to this large stand of trees in this forested area that goes all the way up north, and there's an unnamed, I'm not sure if it's unnamed, but there's a tributary to haul to Fannell Creek in the area. This is the overall site plan, I'm just showing this for reference. I wanted to show, because it will come up on the significant natural resource area, is this line right here as we projected it and mapped it based on prior decisions, and we overlaid that onto the site plan. So there are already improvements inside that significant natural resource overlay, or significant natural resource area. The proposed addition would go right here. About a year ago, maybe two years ago, they covered an existing play, it was like a court, sports court right here, so this just complements it, and it allows students to come in. This is where they all enter into the front. There's an early childhood education building back here, but the students typically come through here and will go through here for school. And then obviously, I'm not entirely positive if I can talk about the circulation entire inside the building for the church activities. Just some elevations that were provided by the architect who's also on the line, if there are any questions. They have been conscientious and tried to make this kind of match the existing character of the church. So it meets the height, like I said, plenty of glazing and windows, I'm sure that Mr. Wilson could speak to this more if you have questions. The utilities, these all are existing utilities that can be extended from utilities that are already on-site, but they all come up from the south and go into the north side of the building. We've got service provider letters in the file, which you should have seen, that demonstrate that there is adequate capacity by the service providers to provide the utilities for the site. I wanted to speak about this because Commissioner McAvoy asked about the tree removal, and I again wanted to just remind you really quick and talk to you about why we're doing this. So here is the significant natural resource area, and we had Joe Wrangler, who's a certified arborist, look at the site and talk about what trees needed to go to accommodate construction, and it's primarily these guys up here to accommodate construction. And we talked to the fire marshal at TVFNR about emergency access. There's already an existing paved access that comes here, but they wanted it to be wider, and we have to trim this area here to make sure that trucks can make their turn radius, come in and then come up the area. So these trees, and they're all conifers, they're all large dug firs, that need to come out to accommodate the additional width for the fire access. And then the fire access and turnaround has to be extended to the extent of the building. I just kind of went over this, but there were no hazardous or dead dying disease trees proposed to be removed. There were six conifers within the significant natural resource area. That's those areas that are west of this line. And then 16 landscape trees that are in and around the building where we're proposing to construct the addition. With that, I don't want to belabor your time. Southwest Church respectfully requests that the city approve the requested permits. Our team is on the line for questions. We have the architect, the engineer, the project manager from Centrex, and we have folks that are from the church to speak to any operational questions that you might have.
Great, thank you. Any questions of applicant with regard to the proposed application, Commissioner Holmes?
No, I think I'm good, thank you.
And Commissioner McAvoy?
Not to belabor the point, but I just wanted to clarify those. You know, that natural resource area overlaps significantly with parking lots that have obviously been developed over time. Were those approved under, I assume the trees are moved for that in previous applications? And so, do you know anything about that?
I don't, I would have to meet the same assumption you did. If you go back into that back portion, there's still some large trees back there where it looks like they might have worked around, but yeah, there were probably trees there prior to those parking areas being installed, and those parking areas look to be fairly older, like those were probably the first part of the church.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner McCann?
I think it was on your slide, but can you speak to the mitigation that you did have to do and how you landed at so few trees? Just, it's a little hard to tell from your plans.
Yeah.
Where are the usable
Sure.
versus edge space and that kind of thing.
So it was, there was, I think there was a requirement for, if I remember correctly, 108 inches for the removal of those landscape trees. And so we talked about putting them back in the SNRA areas, and they felt like it's pretty heavily treated there already. There should be a memo in the file that I had submitted to Lena early on where we talked about, we had our landscape architect. So from the church's perspective, they want to keep this area open for sports and recreation for the students. And then they do own this back property here too, but they also do outdoor ministry and retreats and things on this property as well. So these areas, they were hoping to keep open, and so our landscape architect took a look at where they could fit in trees in some of these areas that are kind of open along the perimeter. And so that's what we proposed, and based on that analysis, I mean, I think it was just largely a negotiation that we had with staff and discussions with the church about their operational requirements.
Understood, it was just a little hard to tell because it looks like they're being planted on the slopes that surround the fields, but you couldn't tell where the bottom of slope is in the plans because the topo wasn't actually on the mitigation plan. So I'm just curious if that could be pushed any further, and also while it's not necessarily a criteria, I would encourage you and the client to reconsider the cascarra that you selected. While it is technically a native tree, it's actually very small and kind of more of a large shrub a lot of the time, and would really encourage, you know, big canopy tree if you're going to go for it. You know, having a native tree is awesome, but there are some big native trees that you could get in there and get some nice shade for those spectators that are sitting on the sloped lawn watching sports and other things that are going on there would be really nice. So since you are doing so little mitigation compared to what was required, I'd say like, try to maximize canopy if you can.
Okay, I'll share that with our team.
Thank you Commissioner McCann, Commissioner Mettler?
No questions from me.
Commissioner Speck?
I don't have any questions either.
And Commissioner Winter?
My questions were answered, thank you.
I have no questions either. We are now at the public testimony portion for this agenda item. We will call for testimony and We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, then those in opposition to the application, then those neither in favor nor in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that 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 apply to the application. Now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. Via Zoom webinar, for those viewing, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in the Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And we have one person that would like to speak. If you could state your name and address, that would be great. Mark Holiday?
Good evening. My name is Mark Holiday. I live at 15162 Southwest Sapphire Drive, due west of the church, probably four or five homes up the street on Sapphire. So within the 500 feet, though I'm not sure of the actual distance. I have viewed what's been presented. I've viewed some other presentations as well. The questions I had regarding traffic have been answered. I'm not sure that you could actually see the building from the street on Weir. I suppose you could from Murray, but basically I think the church's plan will not present any detriment to the neighborhood, and I'm in favor of the plan as presented. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any of those in favor? That would like to speak? I'd like to call on Dave Martini. Dave, if you could give us your name and your address, that would be great.
Actually, that, that isn't me. I don't know. My name is all over the screen. I don't see, I don't know what happened here, but the one with the hand up isn't me.
Okay.
I don't know what happened.
Do we have someone that would like to speak in favor? If so, please state your name and your address.
Yeah, I'm Andrew Pearson. I'm at 12023 Southwest Westbury Terrace.
Great, thank you.
I'm a alumni of the Christian School there, and my daughter is a second grade student, and I just wanted to speak out in favor of this addition of space. The building is very cramped, and as my daughter progresses through school, I look forward to just the expanding elective and breadth of education that the school wants to offer and that these new classrooms are going to provide.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the application? It looks like we do not have any more in favor that would like to speak. But now is the time for public testimony in opposition to the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Staff has indicated that we do not have any public testimony in opposition. Now is the time for those who are neither in favor nor opposed to speak. If you would like to ask a question, please state your name and your address. All right, staff has indicated that we do not have any public testimony neither in favor nor in opposition via the web. Now is the time for the applicant's rebuttal. The applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes, but we're not going to cover that because we haven't had any opposition. So do commissioners have any questions? Any further questions? Doesn't look like any further questions. Does staff have any final comments?
No final comments, thank you.
Great, thank you. With final comments completed, I will close the public hearing. Now is the time for deliberation, and as is standard procedure, I will randomly call in commissioners for discussion on the application. Commissioner Winter?
No, I'm fine. As you can tell, the Savakin knows the drill. Has, we have provided them the opportunity to expand this site multiple times. I don't see there's any.
Okay, thank you.
Application means criteria.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McCann?
Um, I do not have any major significant issues either. As I said before, I would encourage the applicant to reconsider some of the tree species, and even if possible, push in a few more trees where it makes sense, um, understanding that they have limitations on their site, but it would be for the betterment of the environment, and you know, their, the experience of their users out there, so that would be wonderful. Beyond that, I think that it meets the criteria and don't have any concerns with the application.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Speck?
Um, everything looks in order. I don't have any further comments.
Okay. Commissioner Holmes?
Um, I'm in agreement with the staff report that I'd recommend approval for this application.
Great. And Commissioner Mettler?
Um, the staff report and presentation all look pretty straightforward and thorough and in order, and yeah, it looks good to me.
Commissioner McAvoy?
Um, I would echo Commissioner McCann's comments about additional tree plantings and to that effect, and just note that I'm happy to see the conservation easement as a condition of approval to prevent future sort of incremental, you know, incursions into the natural resource area. So that's a great, great condition, and I am satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions, but I would like to also agree with Commissioner McCann on possibility of planting some more trees and vegetation there. With that, is there a motion to continue or approve or deny?
Chairman? I move to approve LU 32025-00269 Southwest Bible Church Edition, based on the facts and findings in the staff report dated July 16th, 2025.
Thank you, Commissioner Winter. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner McCann. Is there any discussion? Looks like we have no discussion. A vote will be taken by roll call. When your name is called, please say yea or nay. Commissioner Holmes?
Yea.
Commissioner McAvoy?
Yay.
Commissioner Mettler?
Yay.
Commissioner McCann?
Yay.
Commissioner Speck?
Yay.
And Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I also, boy, vote yea, and that's unanimous. The motion passes. The planning commission's decision will be memorized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral or written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions in the Beaverton Planning or the Beaverton Development Code and the Rules of Land Use Board of Appeals. We are now adjourned at 7:05 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Take care, everyone.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you all.